To waive required public improvements associated with the prior number which I just referenced. The property address is.
There's no situs address.
There's no.
We have a tax lot number.
Tax lot number two thousand, County Assessors Map eighteen dash eleven dash twelve DA. So to begin with. Like to just ask if anyone challenges the hearings officers jurisdiction to consider this matter. If you have any such challenge, raise your hand or otherwise identify yourself. Is there anyone who challenges my authority to consider the matter on the basis of bias or anything else? And seeing none of, no objection to that. I will advise everyone in attendance that other than just the receipt of communications about logistics and the staff report, I've had no communications with city staff or anyone else regarding this matter. So this is a land use hearing conducted pursuant to the Ben Development Code as well as Oregon Land Use Law. And because of that, the important consideration for folks is to remember that the failure to raise an issue during the course of this proceeding with sufficient specificity may preclude someone from raising that issue before the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. We're going to conduct a hearing in, in the following fashion. We'll start with the staff report and I believe Ms. Patrick, you'll be the one to provide the staff report. After that, we'll, we'll allow the applicant to present their case. The applicant or the applicant's representative. Mr. Holberg, is that you? Okay, all right. And after that, we'll, we'll allow any witnesses who want to testify in favor of the application. After that, we'll allow anyone in opposition to, to the application to present any testimony that, that you might have. And then we'll offer stat, the, the applicant and staff to, to follow up with any rebuttal to the extent that it's necessary. I have reviewed the, the staff report. I have also scanned briefly a large number of public comments. For the benefit of folks, if you have not signed up to speak yet, would you please do so? I suspect most people have, if you want to speak. Either by filling out one of the forms just inside the doorway or otherwise. However, we do that by, by virtual means. I will tell people that prior to making a final decision on this matter, I will review all written comments. So if you've provided written comments, while I would not discourage anyone from providing oral testimony, it's not really necessary and probably wouldn't be that efficient a use of time for someone to just recite what orally, what they've already provided in writing. I will consider everything before I make, make the decision. And if there's nothing else that we need to address, I'll turn it over to Ms. Patrick to provide the staff report.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Dole. So my name is Michelle Patrick. I'm an associate planner in the community and development department. And as Mr. Dole explained, we have a public hearing for Alexander Court. And particularly for two applications, PLLD twenty twenty three zero six three three and PLMISC twenty twenty three zero six nine six. So this is a quasi judicial public hearing. And this presentation is going to provide a review of the requests made under the applicable standards and criteria. I want to encourage everyone, if you want additional detail on everything, it is provided in the staff recommendation that's been uploaded to the project files. So I already read these numbers, but wanted to just give you a little bit more explanation of what these requests entail. So our first one is a single law partition to legalize a property found to not be a legal lot of record. And the six nine six matter is a waiver to public improvement standards to waive the required public improvements associated with our single lot partition. So in layman's terms, the, the single law partition application is essentially a formal request to segregate Alexander Court from the private street network in the Mountain Gate subdivision. And the intent is to establish it as a separate unit of land and have it continue to function as a private street. And because the single law partition application triggers public improvements, the applicant has also submitted a waiver to the public improvement standards. This is because there's no development proposed right now. And this request is essentially deferring these public street improvements to a later time when future development is proposed. Both proposals were submitted as type two administrative review and they were elevated to a type three quasi judicial hearing at the discretion of our CDD director. So a little bit of overview of the area. The subject property is highlighted here. It's located in Southwest Bend within the Mountain Gate subdivision on the south side of Century Drive. The immediate surrounding properties are zoned commercial and undeveloped, as you can see here in this twenty twenty two aerial. But the greater area is primarily zoned residential and developed with residential uses. The property is adjacent to August Lane to the east. And this is a street view image taken by staff in December of twenty twenty three. And as you can see here, the property contains no structures, but is improved with a private street. It's got varying asphalt width and a seven foot wide pedestrian asphalt pathway to the south. The site also contains underground power, a water main, sewer main, and a number of water sewer laterals as well. So I want to review briefly some key dates and benchmarks for the projects. They were accepted as complete on December fifth, twenty twenty three. And per our procedural requirements, we've noticed these as type two administrative reviews and mailed that out on December fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Just for clarity, that was subject to a two hundred and fifty foot radius. At the close of the comment period for that initial notice period, we elevated this to a type three quasi judicial public hearing application. And again, that was at the discretion of the Community and Economic Development Director. And so we then noticed again the applications, but this time as type three quasi judicial. That was mailed out on January fourth and the radius increased to five hundred feet from the subject property. So some of you may have only received that notice one time because the radius did increase. The, we are obviously at our hearing today on January twenty fourth and our hundred and twenty day review period ends on April third of this year. Briefly, I want to cover some public comments. These were detailed in greater length within the staff recommendation. But of note, we had some comments submitted regarding the timing of the comment period falling over the holidays and requests for extension. Because the applications were elevated to type three, that effectively extended that comment period by about twenty days. We got comments regarding the, the location of the posted notice and why it wasn't posted on the, the busier street. But honestly, the, our requirements state that the notice needs to be adjacent to the subject property. And so upon staff confirmation, we went out to the site and confirmed the notices were compliant with our requirements. You know, posted on Alexander Court facing August Lane. We also received some comments regarding ownership of Alexander Court. Particularly comments disputing the authority of the applicant to submit an application and questioning the ownership of the property. So staff determined the submitted documentation satisfied the requirements to prove ownership of the property in accordance with the development code. And that determination was limited to whether the relevant Ben Development Code provisions are met for the purpose of submitting these applications. And it's not to resolve or suggest outcomes of any existing or potential disputes, issues, claims about ownership that may exist between private parties. We additionally received additional comments today from the applicant, which have been uploaded to the project files, but have not yet been reviewed by staff. So that's just a note for Mr. Dole. So I'm going to go through these applications one at a time. We're going to start with a single lot partition and I'm going to begin by just giving some context for the property in the form of visuals. So the, the subject property was plotted in nineteen ninety four as Alexander Court within the Mountain Gate subdivision. And it was as part of the private street network. And you can see Alexander Court here highlighted in pink. That color is only added for the purpose of this presentation. In January of twenty, or two thousand and four, a bargain and sale deed was submitted to the Deschutes County Clerk's Office transferring ownership of common areas and street tracks within the Mountain Gate subdivision to the Mountain Gate Homeowners Association. This is the legal description that accompanied that document. This, the first two large paragraphs here describe the common areas and then also references the private streets down below and again in pink. We took those legal descriptions and the street names overlaid it up on the plat for clarity to help identify which areas were conveyed with that two thousand and four document. And as you can see, the Alexander Court was not included in that conveyance. So the transfer of ownership occurred after the effective date of the City of Ben subdivision ordinance, which was adopted in nineteen eighty one. And that ordinance required local land use action to establish new properties. So without the benefit of a land division approval and the recording of a final plat, the segregation of Alexander Court from the private street network was not completed lawfully. And so the subject property containing Alexander Court is not considered to be a legal lot of record. So the single law partition application again intended to legalize the existing configuration of land containing Alexander Court. So the Ben Development Code has three options for a lot of record validation. The applicant has chose option two, which was a single law partition. So this requires compliance with Oregon revised statutes ninety two point one seven six and the Ben Development Code chapters four point three. So there are seven provisions that need to be met under Oregon revised statutes to validate a unit of land. And this is a summary of the findings. Again, the full description of these can be found in the staff recommendation. So under provision one, the property was not a legal lot of record, as we just discussed. And it could have complied with the City of Ben subdivision ordinance in effect at the time. Under provisions two and three, no permit was ever issued on the property and no dwelling was ever constructed on Alexander Court and therefore those two don't apply to the request. Under provision four, this is not a permit. However, due to the quasi judicial hearing, this provision is actually not material to the application. And under provision six, it's required to fall under this statute that the property be conveyed, conveyed prior to January first of two thousand and seven, which this was. I've separated out provisions five and seven as these are ones that can be met. So as a condition of approval, staff recommends that the final plat be filed within a year of the date of this decision approval. And that future development needs to comply with applicable laws in effect at the time of submittal. And this is a standard requirement for any development that's processed by the city event. So staff ultimately believes the proposal meets the provisions set forth in Oregon revised statutes ninety two point one seven six. And as I stated before, that it also needs to comply, comply with chapter four point three, which in the Ben Development Code, it regulates land divisions and property line adjustments. So there's a number of pages in the staff recommendation that covers this section. But in summary, due to the fact that the surrounding commercially zoned properties are not developed and no development is proposed at this time, staff recommends that a number of the review standards do not apply to this request. And are better addressed with the submittal of a future development application. And that's including things like traffic analysis, sewer water, capacity analysis, block length and perimeter, street trees and other requirements. I want to mention numerous public comments were submitted about the impact of future development on this property and the surrounding properties. And I want to encourage that comments about future development be submitted at the time an application for development is submitted to the city. So I've got two highlighted recommendations here that came out of review of this chapter. One, since validating Alexander Court is not going to convert it to a legal lot of record, staff recommends that Alexander Court is specifically notated as a private street on the final plat. There were public comments stating concerns that validating Alexander Court would turn it into a buildable lot, but that is not the case. It will remain in use as a private street. And the, I have another highlighted section here regarding a waterline easement. So the plat shows a waterline and a sewer line going through Alexander Court. And the plat shows that the waterline and sewer line are contained within twenty foot wide easements. They're not to city standards and specifications. And just, uh, completely don't have things like drainage facilities and curb and the appropriate asphalt with concrete sidewalk. And the, we do have some utility pedestals located where a future sidewalk would be required. So our requirements in title three point four point two hundred, which are, is our transportation improvement standards, requires, um, that streets have an appropriate asphalt width, contain curb, drainage facilities, um, as well as sidewalk. And this is just the overall, um, should I say the, the sections of these code? There is more detail if you dive in. I'm gonna move on to the waiver criterion, just noting that those are the elements required with improvements of, uh, private street. So the waiver criteria include, uh, four elements, and I'm going to go through these one at a time. And so the first criteria requires that the waiver not harm or will be beneficial to the public in general. So I've got two aerial images here, uh, one from two thousand and four and then one from two thousand and twenty-two. So you can see here, there's been little significant change to the area, um, over the past twenty-two years. It looks fairly similar today, so you could argue for the past twenty years. The existing private street currently serves no development, and the frontage improvements are typically required as part of a partition. But because this application is intended only to legalize a unit of land, uh, and no development is proposed, waiving these improvements is not going to harm the public, um, as they've been this way for approximately twenty years. Excuse me. Uh, the second criteria requires that the waiver is not inconsistent with the general purpose of ensuring adequate public facilities. So Alexander Court doesn't serve any development at this time, and so there's little to no traffic on the property currently. Other than you can see some social shows that have cut through this area, um, and are clearly utilized by pedestrians. However, Alexander Court does contain, um, water and sewer mains, which extend beyond this property to serve residential properties both, um, to the east and west. And so these mains are, um, or will be contained within easements dedicated to the City of Bend, which will remain in place and won't be impacted by the waiver. So the network of vehicular and pedestrian access, which exists throughout the Mountain Gate subdivision and surrounding developments will also remain in place after this waiver. The third criterion, um, requires the waiver not prohibit the implementation of a bicycle low-stress route or crossing as shown in two adopted documents the City of Bend has. And that includes the Transportation System Plan and the City of Bend's, uh, Standards and Specifications City Connector Routes. That's a little bit of a mouthful. They're essentially identifying, um, you know, bike, ped infrastructure in the city. So the waiver won't prohibit the implementation of a bicycle low-stress route or crossing due to the fact that that's identified on Century Drive and implemented with the Hall Trail. So in these two figures, the subject property location is approximated with this, um, green triangle. So you can see Century Drive to the north, Brookswood to the south here. So a low-stress, stress network does not cross through, and it's not adjacent to this property. The fourth criterion is, uh, essentially we have a menu of twelve options, and then, uh, applicant needed to select one that was met in order to approve the waiver. And criterion seven requires, which applicant chose, the existing infrastructure does not meet current standards, is and will remain functionally equivalent to current standards, and there's little likelihood that current standards will be met in the area. So the Alexander Court lacks compliant sidewalk, drainage facilities, and appropriate asphalt width, which we, uh, discussed in previous slides. And it does not serve any existing uses or proposed uses, um, with this application. And the street is therefore functionally equivalent to the current standards. It's also of low likelihood that the standards for local streets will be fully met within the surrounding area. And that's indicated by the extent of the private street network in the Mountain Gate subdivision and surrounding developments that contain similar substandard development, uh, development standards. Additionally, uh, any future development on the site, including a further land division, site plan review or development that meets, um, minimum development standards review, will be required to meet the applicable public improvement standards and associated standards and specifications at the time of submittal. And so overall, um, staff finds that the applicant has met the criteria for the single lot partition and waiver to public improvement standards and recommends that both applications be approved, uh, subject to the conditions referenced throughout this presentation and within the staff report, and I've listed them collectively here. So, um, that concludes staff's presentation, but I wanted to leave up my email in the event anyone else wanted to, send public comment to me to be uploaded to the record.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patrick. And so we'll now ask the, uh, the applicant or the applicant's representative to provide their input and testimony. If you can start by just stating for the record your name and your representation and so forth. Okay. For the record, uh, Mr. Holtberg has provided to me, is a copy of his January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four letter. And we're, appears to be a page out of, out of the staff report, and he's duplicated chapter ninety-two of the Oregon revised statutes.
That's the current edition, you said?
That is the nineteen ninety-three version.
Okay. And you send that to us when you're
Can you want to transmit that to him electronically? You want me to hand it to him? However you want to do it is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Hearings Officer Dole. My name is Steve Holtberg. I am a local land use attorney here, and I'm representing the applicant, uh, JMMT LLC. With me is our planning consultant, John Skidmore. Uh, and our, uh, surveyor, Grant Hardgrave, was unable to make it today due to, uh, a family-related issue. John's here to answer any questions that you might have that I can't answer. Uh, and if we need to, we can, um, if there are any sort of survey-type issues, we can, uh, respond after today's hearing if the record is, if is, uh, left open. As I said, I represent JMMT LLC, and that is a local company comprised of a, a, a number of local residents, many long-term residents of Bend. They are under contract to purchase what's known as the Office Park. Um, the Office Park is identified as lots A through E, uh, in, uh, the Mountain Gate plat. So it's just that the undeveloped property is referenced as the Office Park. It's how it was referenced, uh, back in ninety-four and has been referenced, uh, since that time. At the outset, I, I do want to point out that the applicant does not have any specific development plans for the property. Uh, this application, uh, as Ms. Patrick identified, is merely to formalize a lot line, uh, that has really been in place in terms of ownership since two thousand and four. Uh, nothing more. Alexander Court will remain a private street. Uh, nothing at all changes, other than we will have a formal lot line at the end of Alexander Court where it meets August Lane. And, and that's the handout that I, that I gave to Hearings Officer Dole. It's just the excerpt of the staff report, which shows the, the pink, um, identification of Alexander Court. The only thing that changes is that there will be a line, uh, along August Lane to segregate Alexander Court. Uh, again, nothing, uh, will change with this application. Uh, specifically, it's not going to turn Alexander Court into a buildable lot. Uh, it will remain a private street as first indicated on the, uh, the plat for Mountain Gate. And the plat for the single lot partition will continue to include, uh, that requirement that it, uh, be a private street. The, the need for this, um, as Ms. Patrick, and I, and I should say that was a fantastic staff report. It really eliminated the need for me to go through a lot of stuff, so thank you. The, the, the need for this application really derives from the fact that in two thousand and four, the developer of the Mountain Gate subdivision conveyed the common areas and the private streets other than Alexander Court to the association. That was done with the assumption, I believe, at the time that Alexander Court and the other private streets were separate tracts of land. I think it was probably just an oversight back in two thousand and four. Nonetheless, it was done. And so really, the purpose here is to ensure that Alexander Court is recognized as a lawfully created unit of land. Again, not trying to do anything else with this application, uh, other than that. The, as the staff report indicated, and as the statute makes clear, there are really only two standards that apply to this application. Uh, and, and I'm specifically not going to address the waiver of public improvement standards. Uh, I will rely on our submittal and the staff report on that. I, I don't think that the city could constitutionally require any improvements, frontage improvements or anything else at this point, given that we're only trying to formalize a lot line. So the, the two standards that apply, uh, are set forth in statute. And first was the unit of land created before two thousand and seven. The second is when it was created, initially created in nineteen ninety-four, could have Alexander Court been created in its current configuration, which is, again, that pink, excerpt from the staff report. And, and the answer to both of those questions i- is yes. The property or Alexander Court was created separately in two thousand and four at the time of conveyance to the Homeowners Association. And related to the permissibility of creating private tracks, private street tracks have been allowed in plats since I, prior to the subdivision ordinance being adopted in seventy-two, I believe. But there's nothing in the statute that, that I handed to you, which is the nineteen ninety-three version. Nor could I find anything in NS thirteen, uh, forty-nine, which is the city's old subdivision code, that would have prohibited, prohibited the creation of Alexander Court as a private street in its current configuration. And for those reasons, the two standards set by statute have been met. There's really nothing else to address. And as, you know, you, if you saw the record, if you saw the comments in the record, so many of the comments relate to concerns about future development. Those are legitimate concerns for people to have. People are understandably, uh, concerned and want to know what's going on in their neighborhood. We're well aware of those concerns. But those issues are best left, uh, addressed at the time if and when the property is sought for development, but not at this point. There was another comment or a series of comments about the ownership of Alexander Court. Two primary comments related to that. First, in terms of ownership for purposes of this application and the city's code for getting your application in and having it deemed complete, the owner is identified, and I'm paraphrasing here, but as the owner identified on the most recent deed. That owner has, uh, signed the application, authorized this application to go forward, so that standard has been met. The other relates to, um, assertions that the Alexander Court was somehow conveyed to the association. All of the evidence in the record that we have provided shows that exactly the opposite is true. Alexander Court and lots A through E in the Office Park were specifically excluded from the plan of Mountain Gate, and the plan of Mountain Gate is the set of CCNRs that govern the residential development. Alexander Court was specifically included in the, the Office Park CCNRs, which shows a clear intent of the developer at that time to segregate lots A through E and Alexander Court from the overall Mountain Gate subdivision. There was a two thousand and seven access easement in which the Mountain Gate Homeowners Association specifically acknowledged that Alexander Court was owned by the grantor and, or by the developer and not the association. All the deed transfers, all the easements, everything since nineteen ninety-four has shown that the association does not own Alexander Court, meaning the homeowners association. And again, those issues are not really relevant to the approval criteria for this application. But I did want to mention those, so you are aware that at least we have looked at those issues and confirmed, certainly for ourselves, the ownership issue. And with that, I don't have any more comments, uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I suspect there'll be some comments on rebuttal.
Sure. One question I have is why? Is there a particular reason, um, that is motivating this application now as opposed to deferring it to a point in time when there's actual development proposed?
It's a, it's trying to create a, a level of certainty about the status of that lot. There were prior land use applications, and the legal lot status of Alexander Court got sort of in the way and was a bit messy. Those applications, from my recollection, predated the statute that allows one to validate a, a unit of land. And so we thought, well, if there are potential development options on the table, let's get this issue resolved now, rather than putting a bunch of money into design and development, only to have this issue come up at some point in the future. That's really the motivation. It's one of certainty.
Right? I think that, that's the only question that I, that I have. Right?
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else? Is Mr. Hardgrave?
No, this is Mr. Skidmore.
Mr. Skidmore, excuse me.
He's here for moral support.
This moral support, that's right. Do you have any other witnesses?
No, we do not.
Okay. With that, is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application? All right. Hearing none, um, then we will, uh, turn things over to public comment, and we'll, um, a couple of things about public comment. First, I think there is a fairly significant number of folks who would like to testify.
So far, I only have two that are here, in person, and then online participants, if you wish to speak, um, please raise your virtual hand, and I'll be able to kind of help there, but
Right. There's no way to know. But at least at this point in time, we only have, have two individuals in the audience who'd like to come forward and testify. That's fine.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience would like to provide public comment? Please just fill out any, uh, public comment slip and hand it over to me. Thank you.
Doesn't look like anybody's jumping up to.
We'll see if that changes.
So I was, uh, you know, I was going to wait and see how many folks wanted to, um, register an indication to, uh, provide any comment in opposition before I, um, set any time limits. And since there are only two folks who appear to, uh, intend to speak, uh, I think we'll just kind of, um, dispense with that bit of a formality. And let me just, uh, caution folks, do your best, um, to confine your remarks to the criteria that has been identified in the staff report. I know that can be a little bit difficult, especially if you're not used to how all these things work. And I don't intend to cut anybody off, but, but really what we're trying to do is to give folks the opportunity to address the, the criteria in the Ben Development Code and otherwise under Oregon law. It's kind of dictates what, uh, what the decisions have to be with respect to these applications. So let's get on with it. Has anybody registered an indication to, that they want to address?
Uh, yes, in the audience, uh, or online.
Online. Is there anybody online?
You wish to provide public comment online, please raise your hand at this time.
I know it's hard for, to hear Chris, but if you're online and you wish to speak, please raise your hand. I think we have one hand up.
One so far, yes.
Then we'll go ahead and take care of the folks that are in the audience.
Gary Settle? The top, my boss.
Sattel. Good afternoon, sir. You can take a seat, and if you would start by stating your name and giving me your address. And speak into the microphone.
A little towards you. Thank you.
There you go.
My name is Gary Sattel. I'm the president of Mountain Gate Homeowners Association.
And I live at one six nine three nine five Clear Knight Drive, Bend, Oregon, nine seven seven oh two. And I guess we have replied to, have legally replied to the project here. I just wanted to make a couple of statements. Alexander Court has been a road in Mountain Gate for almost thirty years. It was created by a legal dedication that was filed in the courthouse in nineteen ninety-four. And we think that because there was an omission in a transfer of property in two thousand four, that that does not change it from being a legal private road as supposedly promised to be dedicated by the developer. Okay? As far as the legal ownership of record, if they're referring to a deed filed in, I think, two thousand eighteen, I wish somebody would do a title search and track the title of this property from nineteen ninety-four all the way up. Because anybody can file a deed on a piece of property, okay? Doesn't mean they necessarily own it, okay? It's the track record of what ownership was. And in nineteen ninety-four, the ownership was promised to the Mountain Gate Homeowners Association, filed legally in the courthouse. And we have maintained it, that we do own that since then. So it really concerns the owners of Mountain Gate Homeowners Association. That's something that we thought was part of our ownership on our streets is now being changed to a private, private street. So the question we have is, once it becomes a private, private street of some sort, who has access to it? Who's going to maintain it? Who has liability charges against it? And does the right of way that we signed, we signed a right of way to give Alex- access to those lots via Alexander Court, and keep in mind it's via Alexander Court, to our streets so that they could access the public roads. Okay? And it says that right on the easement. They did a dissertation about who owned what in there, and we could have cared less at the time. We were just granting them access to our roads so they could get out to the public roads. If Alexander Court doesn't exist as one of our streets, is the easement legal anymore? Just curiosity. Okay? And that actually access those five lots have to the public roads is Alexander Court and access through our streets. Unless they create access onto Mammoth Drive, which is a whole nother story. Okay? So anyhow, those are a couple of things. And it says that it was not created as a public street prior to two thousand seven. It was created as a public street in nineteen ninety-four by dedication. And if the dedication doesn't give a ownership right, does the city own the easements that were dedicated on the same flat? Just curiosity. Okay? I'm not a liar, but I'm just curious. Did the developer subsequently grant title, fee title, simple fee title, or whatever they call it, to the city on those easements in a separate document? I'm just, so anyhow, those are my comments. And we are really concerned that we can maintain access to it, okay? And that they cover all the bases on the street. And then in the future, we'll discuss the future when that comes up, okay? And we really wanted to work with the developers. The last developer we worked well with, they came up with a development scheme that required the elimination of Alexander Court, which we had agreed with them on, because they had a really good plan on how to access all their development. And they worked with us really well, and we will be willing to work with any future developers same way, okay? We would like to have it developed. It needs to be developed because empty land is not good. And we're more than happy to work with any developer if they'll work with us. We just don't want things to change before we know what's happening, okay? I'll leave it to that.
Your remarks have been, I think, primarily addressed towards the the application to legalize the lot.
Correct.
Does the association have any position with regards to the other application to waive the public improvement standards? Or is that just kind of a?
No, that's just kind of secondary, yeah. So in my opinion, if it's a road now and they want to turn it into a road again, why don't we just change the tax ID to Mountain Gate Homeowners Association, just the way it's been probably up to the date that they started charging the developer with it. We noted that the developer started paying taxes. And more than happy to have people pay taxes on our roads if they want to. Okay, I shouldn't say that, but that's more than happy to have them do that. Okay, so I'll leave it to that.
No, very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
All right. Next, we have Boyd Hayes.
Is it Hayes?
Hayes. My name is Boyd, B O Y D Hayes. I'm at one nine five nine zero Brookside Way in a adjacent area to the Alexander Court question.
Very good. Thanks, sir.
I've prepared a group of notes ad hoc. You can see that they're scribbled and I can no longer read them. So I'm going to have to try to pull the german ones out, holding to your instructions that I didn't quite hear because I was frantically trying to read these at the outset. So.
The only instruction was to try to confine your remarks to the applicable criteria, which, let's just let you go ahead and get started.
This will seem perhaps tangential, and I don't mean it to be. But to speak to the people who are in this room, we are all vested in this, deeply vested. I'm extremely vested when I saw the word variance in one of the documents because I live downstream of waterfall that comes into my foundation area because of a previous decision by this body to allow the development of my HOA within proper grading. So granted, I'm sensitive to that. And when we saw the development over by the Loge in the front page of the Bend, and we saw a subsequent one up on the plateau of a hundred homes, we knew that we were not being adequately served by the city, by this process indeed. The process has failed its citizenry, us in particular. Because there is no park in our area. And we wondered, as you might, the jurisdiction of this venue, what does it cover? Do the city planners not talk to one another? So my real question has to do with ultimately that jurisdiction because the outpouring of interest in this topic is because of past. It's because of the bulldozing and the grading and the removal of all plant life on Loge. The subsequent notice in the bulletin that a similar thing was going to be done on the plateau. If past is prologue, we can assume that those thirty-six inch diameter trees, or whatever they were, I eyeballed them, the twenty or so thirty trees in that lot are not going to fare well during the development process. And yet we are not representing, it's one of the few last places on the west side, on the north, whatever side, on our side of century that could possibly be used to accommodate the hundred and fifty homes that are going in and their children. And so in general, back to the point, this might have come up underneath the heading of opposition, but I'd rather be a proponent of what's good than opposing what's bad. And what was bad about the presentation before was the disingenuousness of the line. Nothing will change but a line on a map. What does in fact change is inertia. And we all know that what happens in city planning is incremental steps are made until the sum of all of those steps is in opposition of the citizenry. And that's what we're facing today. We're not facing a line on a map. We're facing the first line on many lines on a map that will lead to the omission of park space that should have been allocated and handled by the Parks Department. So thank you for indulging me. My question was this. Who represents the interests of the Bend citizenry and this cadre? Who do you all report to that has the parks underneath you? Who do I go to to try to stem the tide of this wanton disregard for life in our city at the ultimate peril of our Chamber of Commerce and our businesses? When people no longer want to come to Bend because it's pretty joyous and wonderful, the city will die. We saw that when the mills decayed. Let's not contribute to that decay again overtly by aligning with someone who says, I'm only wanting to draw a line on a map, because it's not about a line on a map. It's about people's lives. It's about the city's future, and it should not be treated in such a callous disingenuous way as to declare it as merely I drew a line on a friggin' map. That's an insult to everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So Mr. Hayes makes some salient points, those which I think are respected by many in the community. It's probably little consolation that the comments that Mr. Hayes provided to be candid, sort of exceed the hearings officer's jurisdiction, the ability for me to do things.
Who has jurisdiction over both you and the parks? You're not clearly not communicating. Clearly, there's a failure in the Bend city system. I'd like to know how we remedy that.
And I would encourage you to communicate further with your elected officials and with the planning staff, the planning director. There's, my jurisdiction does not include anything to address those. And I'm happy to do that. And I'm happy to do that. So. Very good. Thank you, sir. Next.
There's no one currently online. If anyone online would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Thought we had one individual, that person.
Did, but they're no longer, they no longer, they lowered their hands since.
All right.
We have one, yes.
One person.
All right.
unmute yourself and you can speak.
Hi, my name is Lori Rill, R Y L L. My husband Eric and I live at six one two five eight southwest Brookside Loop.
Sir, and is, that person is not gonna have their face on a screen, correct? Okay, sir, could you, assuming you can hear me okay, would you please?
Unmute it.
Are you there? Hello? It sounded like you heard me.
I don't know what happened.
I don't know what happened.
Don't click anything more, just let it be.
Hello?
This Laurel?
This is Lori.
Lori, sorry. It's showing as your husband's name on the screen.
He's here too.
You can go ahead and speak now.
Okay, thank you. Do you need my address again? Hello?
Sure.
Six one two five eight southwest Brookside Loop. We're definitely outside of the five hundred foot radius, but we're concerned. And Mr. Hayes voiced everything that we were wanting to discuss. So we just wanted to let you know that we're in complete agreeance with his comments.
Can you guys hear us?
Did you hear any of that?
Hello?
Hello?
It's not working. Don't.
No.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
No. Probably our bad Wi-Fi.
Test, test, test.
I can hear it on my computer now.
Okay. And let's walk it in refresh, because it might take a little bit.
Is that on? Screen to share?
Because of video.
Or should, or change it to gallery.
Yep, now it seems to be.
Full screen. Would unmute it?
Yep. Now I can hear you.
And we're back in YouTube.
Yes, let's just see if any can.
So now you should be able to allow them to.
That's what Sam's like, oh, weird, but that's what seemed like.
Yep, you want to try it again?
Yeah, let's give it a full round. Uh, all right, I believe folks can hear us again, um, to reestablish some sort of connection. Okay, um, so we need to just test to see if a virtual attendant can speak.
Okay, great, excellent. So if anyone online, uh, I'll use you for the technical difficulties here. I see Morgan Emerson's hand up. Um, I'm going to give you permission to speak at this time, and then please unmute your mic and you can give this a try.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Dan Emerson. I live at nineteen five twelve Southwest Meadowbrook Drive. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you. And your, and your last name, sir, again, is?
Emerson.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, go ahead.
I just had two comments. I believe it was, uh, Mr. Hayes said something about this kind of stopping the inertia. And I, and I think that's correct. Um, and I've, I've heard in the room, a lot of folks say, well, there's no development planned. Um, but I do believe that, uh, you know, there's been a lot of pre-applications for this in the past that have been pulled. I believe there's one in 2022 for a four-story, um, kind of vacation rental. Um, and I believe that under questioning from the hearings officer, the applicant basically stated that this was to, um, kind of clear the way for potential development in the future. And, um, so in some ways I do think that's stopping and kind of changing the inertia. And I would just advocate that, um, this be delayed until there is an actual development plan or until, uh, the ownership has been, um, kind of more figured out between the Mountain Gate, uh, community and the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we have anyone else?
Not at this time. Anyone else online? Uh, oh, Scott.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Peterson, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, you guys see unmute?
Yeah, we can hear you, sir. Can you state your name and place your address, please?
Uh, Scott Peterson, Clear Knight Drive, uh, or sorry, one nine six five three Clear Knight Drive.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Oh, yeah, a couple of quick questions. Um, one, for safety's sake, city council should consider putting, allowing a chat window on these so that we could tell you that we were off of the meeting for a long period of time. So that's a technical question, assume one on one. Uh, but question to this, uh, I think Gary brought up an interesting point, which is, and so did the last person, so I would like to also pause this or suggest a pause until ownership and plot can actually be clearly defined. I don't think that the city, uh, should move forward without knowing who the owner of the property is. I think legally it is not clear who owns it. And my question to the city would then be, if this is, if you go through with this, will the rest of Mountain Gate have to be replotted because it's going against the original plot that was developed or put together with the original development?
All right, sir. Anything else?
Good, no, I guess that'll be it.
Very good, thank you. I appreciate your, your points and we'll see if there's some further discussion about those. All right. Do we have anyone else?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Person Eric that was on the line, can no longer speak, he's had an appointment.
Uh huh.
He echoed.
Okay, so, and is that Mr. Ryle? Okay, so for the record, Mr. Ryle has sent, I assume, a text message or something, just wanting to indicate that he concurs with Mr. Hayes' comments. Very good, thank you. And that, that'll, that's noted in the record. All right.
Anyone else online at this time?
All right, so if there's no one else who wishes to speak in opposition, then I would turn the matter back over to Ms. Patrick for any response, um, to anything that's been raised by either the applicant or any witnesses in opposition. Does staff have any comments?
Mr. Hearings Officer, sorry, I would just add, um, because there were some comments raised, um, that are not germane to the matter before the hearings officer. And I please encourage you to reach out to staff if you want to follow up on any of those concerns or questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And again, I would, I would echo that to the extent that there are concerns that do not specifically address the criteria. Folks, please understand that your planning department, I know these processes can get frustrating, but that your planning department is here, uh, to hear your concerns. And, uh, and folks should feel that they have access to that, um, to folks who have those roles as well. Very good. Ms. Patrick.
And the only thing I would add is, um, related to the, the comment that Renee made and that comments about the parks in the area can also be directed to the Ben Park and Recreation, Recreation District. Um, yeah.
I've just been told that there is a city, maybe an ordinance, maybe a tenant, that there should be a park within one mile of a home. We do not have that. And now they're in the data with another 150 homes, approximately 500 people, many of which are new homes, which will have tract young families, which will have children with no place to go except to race across Century Boulevard with a parade of people driving back and forth from bachelor.
Okay, all right. So, um, those points are, are noted. Um, turn this back over to Mr. Holtberg. Um, and I would ask that you, um, among other things, do your best to address, um, Mr. Satell's comments. But I don't mean to confine you.
Uh, thank you again. For the record, Steve Holtberg representing the applicant, uh, in this matter. Uh, before I go, uh, any further, I do want to keep the record open for seven days so I can ensure that I have adequately reviewed the comments and responded to each of those and provided evidence, uh, if I need to. So that's a request that I wanted to get out of the way.
Understood.
Uh, I, and again, this is sort of a, a partial rebuttal and I would be putting the rest into our additional written testimony. Um, the, Mr. Satell, if I'm getting it correctly, if I'm incorrectly, I'm sorry, but that he referenced a 2018, uh, deed and said that it doesn't matter. That is not the deed to which we are referring in our application. Uh, the one we are referring to, uh, which created Alexander Court as a separate ownership, not a separate tract, but a separate ownership, was the 2004, uh, deed to the Association of the Common Areas and the other private streets which specifically excluded Alexander Court. Uh, I do want to note a couple of things for the record. There are, there were two sets of CCNRs that were recorded immediately after recording of the Mountain Gate plat. Those were the Office Park CCNRs and then the Plan of Mountain Gate, which I'll refer to as the, uh, Mountain Gate HOA or the Mountain Gate CCNRs. The, the timing of that is, I think, important because the plat, the CCNRs, Office Park CCNRs, and then the HOA CCNRs were recorded in that order. The three of those together show a very clear intent to keep the Office Park, which includes Alexander Court, out of the Plan of Mountain Gate. Uh, the Office Park CCNRs say that. The next document that's recorded are the, uh, HOA CCNRs and those specifically exclude the Office Park. Um, with respect to a alleged conveyance in 1994 to the Association, the Association did not exist until 2004. It was impossible to have conveyed real property to an entity that did not exist in 1994. The CCNRs for the Mountain Gate Association explain that the developer was going to develop those streets and then at a later date convey those streets. It's very clearly spelled out in the, uh, HOA CCNRs. That was done in 2004 when the Association was created as an entity under the Secretary of State. I think it was 10 days later, the common area and the streets other than Alexander Court were conveyed to the Association. And again, that is the relevant date right there is 2004 when the ownership of Alexander Court and the adjacent streets were segregated into two separate ownerships. One in the Association and Alexander Court being retained by the developer. Um, you know, there's been a fair amount of discussion about, you know, the, the use of this property and the fact that it should be, uh, a park or something other than that. Um, I will note that since 1995, um, the following is applied to the Office Park. And I'll quote, "Office Park is being developed as a planned mixed-use business office and multiple-family dwelling complex. Multiple-family dwellings may include condominiums, apartments, timeshare units, and other dwelling types approved by the declarant." Goes on from there. But the point being, this has never been set aside as an open space or a park or anything else. The documents have clearly identified since 1995 that this is going to be allowed for mixed-use development. It's the reason that the city has zoned it, uh, CL for, for decades. It's, there's been no rezoning, uh, of, of recent, of any note, um, in this area. So I, I only point that out to, you know, address concerns that this is some sort of switch in this, you know, this lack of, or this, this inertia to, to development. Well, that inertia started in 1995 when this property was approved for a mixed-use development in that area. And so, uh, while people may not have fully understood that, that is in the public record, it's in the land use decisions and it's in the relevant CCNRs, uh, for the. It's in the land use decisions and it's in the relevant CCNRs for the Office Park. With that, I'm going to reserve the rest of our rebuttal for our written comments, unless the hearings officer has any further questions for me.
Um, one moment, don't think I do, but. Um, no, I don't, thank you.
Oh, and if I, and if I could, I'm, I'm sorry, just one last comment in response to Mr. Satell and his desire to meet with the ownership group. We are very happy to meet with the association. There is no desire to sort of hide the ball on this one. And I'm being honest when I say that there are no development plans that are ready to go on this. This is, as I said, the first step to that. We certainly plan on meeting with the association and its members at an appropriate time and hopefully that's going to be soon. So I, I appreciate that offer to meet and I, again, will pass that on to my client to make sure that that meeting does happen.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that should conclude today's hearing process. Now for folks both present and and on attending virtually, Mr. Holtberg requested that the record be left open. It is anyone's right to make that request and it's not optional to to grant or deny that sort of request. It's, anyone has that right and so the applicant has chosen to exercise that right. The rule provides that that the record is left open for written comments and anyone who wishes to respond to that may, may do that. So what's staff's recommendation about dates and so forth for that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dole. So if you wanted to leave that open for seven days, that would be January thirty-first and we'd ask that the comments be submitted by five PM so that if they come in via email, we can make sure they're uploaded to the project file for all to see by that date in time.
And are, and would we then allow an additional period for, for response to written evidence or testimony of a, of a like period of time?
That would be fine.
Very good, okay. So then what, what, how we're going to handle this is that anyone may provide additional written testimony or evidence by five PM on January thirty-first, on February seventh. And at that point in time, the record will be closed and I would then proceed to make, make my decision. So if that sounds appropriate with, from staff standpoint, okay. Then that's what we're going to do. And with, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close today's hearing and folks who wish to provide any additional written testimony and evidence can provide that through staff as they've done so far. Okay. Uh, anything else? Well, good, okay. And we're off the record. Thank you very much, folks, for attending.